Is hereby declared a nuisance. I think we're, maintain should be not maintained. If somebody's maintaining their problem, property, that's what you want them to do. I think it should say not maintained slash blank.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I shouldn't say not maintain, if you, because if you're maintaining it, then.
What does that mean that you already outbuild something else on your property? That's kind of what I'm taking that as. Any building or structure which is erected, moved, placed, reconstructed, raised, extended, enlarged, altered, maintained, or changed in violation of any provision of this ordinance is hereby declared to be a nuisance per, oh see.
I see maintain though, our book doesn't say that you have to say maintain, I take that as, you know, painting maybe, that's pretty basic, but damn, we don't have anything in our zoning book that says you have to maintain your, paint your house, or, or anything like that, so, I, even if we put not maintained, I don't see how maintain should be, be in there myself. That's how I feel, that's all.
Just take the word maintain out.
Yeah, it's kind of unclear.
Yeah, I can, I can understand that maintain.
Anything else, any other changes in two oh, section two oh eight?
I, I just got C, it says, I don't know, do we need to define how that's done? It says, in such relief as may be provided by law, but it may seek conjunctive relief. I guess common. I wonder if that's sort of.
That's just getting the recall, isn't it, like, it's like say you did do something, and there was a fine imposed on your property, they add that to your taxes.
Oh, should we have that called out then?
It's in the front of that as a tax.
Which one, yeah, I got us?
C, two oh seven C. It may seek conjunctive relief against persons alleged in violation of this ordinance and other such relief as may be provided by law.
I think that's just them trying to get a recall for any kind of.
Shall we, shall we add in that section penalties can slash may be added to your tax bill?
Or, someplace in there too, that does say that they'll be added to your taxes. I'm not sure if part of it is.
Probably.
Cause I read it in there.
Under enforcement or. Um, I think it would be under enforcement.
It'll say, yeah, cause it'd be in this first section.
Yeah, it'd be under the section where you.
Yeah, it would have to be under the section, cause this is under enforcement violations of penalties.
I'll repeat it three times.
You know, I don't think it would hurt to add, um, that it would be taken out of your taxes or added to your taxes, however you want to word that, even if it is someplace else. At least it's in another spot, since nobody could write this whole with their finger on it or add. Probably not added if it's something else.
Yeah.
That's what made me add. I didn't want to have to do it. He's also got here for E. Uh, question, if township administrator has powers, why we need the supervisor's approval?
Where was that at?
Uh, it'd be section two oh seven D. Uh, excuse me, two eight. He's got, uh, section two oh seven E, which it starts on two oh seven, and then goes over here to uh, two, two eight. I guess I see what he's trying to get at is, uh, the township administrator, the zoning administrator has the right to, uh, make a violation, and then why does, and still have to go in front of the township supervisor?
That could take up to three hours with ours.
Probably because supervisors should be aware of what's going on.
Well, that's, I think that's like, uh, what is it, checks and balances?
Yeah, yeah.
So. Article, his next one's article three five, section three oh six D.
Three oh six what?
Uh, it'd be three five, section three oh six.
Oh, that's on, that all has to be changed, because we need those changes, that is, the personal onsite winter nights.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they gotta come on out.
Yeah, we've already, we've already covered all of that.
Three sixteen.
All he's got here is that they change fifty-five decibels.
We have other changes.
I think that one.
That, because we guys have that single lex.
Yeah, I put that page in here.
Yeah, exactly, so, so, but I don't have it.
That's something that's been changed, it just ain't added yet.
That is correct.
Alright. I have three oh six B about swimming pool stuff. Oh, my notes says the swimming pool stuff.
I have, I have that too.
Yeah, I think part of my question too was the fluorization sterilization, what about people that use bromide or salt water?
Yeah. It just says, I think that's just, it says that it's gotta be sterilized no matter what, if you use bromine or chlorine.
But chlorine is a specific, chlorination is chlorine is specific.
Yeah.
It should say sterilized by approved methods or something like that.
Uh, it would be B, under B three oh six B, and number three.
Okay.
Shall we say.
Filtered and sterilized per industry standard accepted.
Yeah.
Cause of some disease.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's saying that everybody has to have a coordination.
Right. That was stuff out to B, swimming pools that have bromide.
So it's a public one, which is, it's private though. Why, why is that even in there? Is this pertaining to a private swimming pool? That ain't none of your business, whether I'm the senator or not.
Well, and I, but you should also get to the point of, if you don't keep it, uh, you can get the mosquito larvae and everything else.
Turns green, yeah.
Where you don't, if you keep them chlorinated.
Do you want to pay attention to that?
Or don't want to.
I do mine.
Exactly, you're doing your own, and I would too, but are you gonna pay attention to anybody else's?
I, I think some of this whole thing on the swimming pool is stupid. I think any portable pool should not have to have a zoning permit put on it to set it up.
You can write it that way.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, this right here is getting into somebody else's business, and it, they could get took, I mean, already it took me off.
Oh, yeah, me too.
Because it's not necessary.
It shouldn't say just chlorine, chlorine, it should be an option of.
It should say personal there, it should say, this is for personal use only.
Yes.
Because it's nobody else's business.
They're considered an accessory structure for the purpose of determining location on the property inquiring yard spaces of swimming pool, whether temporary or permanent, should also require a zoning permit to be issued prior to the installation, additional standards include.
Yeah.
I can see it on an in-ground pool.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, especially if it's gonna be in-ground, needs to be fenced, I mean, obviously for safety measures, but I mean, telling them how to maintain it, that's unknown.
Sounds like you just scratch it.
Yeah, I just take it right out of there.
Cause aren't the temporary ones, don't they take them down every year?
No, most of the temporary ones, yeah, get taken down, yeah, no.
Where you drain them down so far and then let them freeze, actually it's better, because they don't leak, right? If you take them down, if you hold them, now there's your leak, not that I know of.
Okay, so, how about this first? So how about this first suggestion, why don't we just delete three?
Yeah, take it right out.
Take it right out, I mean.
Section.
Yeah.
Go six.
Because who's gonna go around everyone's backyard and check to see if they've been cleaning their pool? I have better things to do with my time, now Dan, if you'd like to do that, people would like to go around and do that.
I'd even talk to my neighbors.
Exactly, so you're not going to care if they're maintaining those pools or not?
I would say too, though, that some of these stipulations, like the, if you've got a, even a temporary, uh, you gotta have ten foot separation between this accessory structure to the deck or a structure intended to be associated with the swimming pool, uh, and then over here, the other accessory structure must be fenced in accordance with the state construction code requirements for fencing. And you're gonna have to put a fence around a, a temporary pool.
Not temporary.
Let's just say, then it makes it not temporary, that's the thing, yeah, and I don't see any state officials going around people's houses going, do you have a fence around that temporary pool?
Can we, uh, for section B, where it says a swimming pool, and where it says te- whether temporary, or, can we take whether temporary or, you heard of that? I mean, I can see it on, on an in-ground pool, you got some water fence around it, kids could fall into it.
So.
I don't know, the sides on a lot of these temporary pools or portable pools are already fifty inches, no kid's gonna climb into there.
Right. So if we did a swimming pool, permanent, or just put a permanent swimming pool, shall require a zoning permit to be issued prior to installation.
Exactly. Take the temporary out.
What's temporary?
Anything that's portable.
Okay, seasonal. Yeah, what do you got in here about hot tubs, you wanna get, um, technical?
Exactly, yeah. Well, right, I don't see, weeding pools are considered to be.
A what?
According to this, temporary permit, a little weeding pool is supposed to be. Exactly.
Yeah, that's.
That's ridiculous.
Yeah.
I've never heard of that.
There was never anybody that said that, that's stupid, weeding pool.
Yeah, one guy got drunk from a couch, aside did, that was it, water gone, man.
A weeding. You're not leaving that, is it?
We're back to the draft.
The way we read a little weeding pool has to be fenced.
That's ridiculous. Mm-hmm, that's why we're deleting it.
Good.
Okay, alright, moving on.
Yeah, he's got also here, article three, three six, uh, section three oh seven A six.
I, I wanna back up, I back up to.
Okay, where are you at?
Three oh six C. Outdoors winter.
Okay.
C and three A, it says outdoor shall be located no closer than twenty-five feet to any residential property. And then you go to four, the outdoor furnace shall be no less than thirty-five feet from residentially or commercially occupied structure.
Which is it? Right?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I saw that too.
Well, then it says twenty-five, the next one says fifty, and the next one's thirty-five.
No closer than fifty feet to any property zone.
That's.
Well, that one's to a school.
School, church, church.
Public, public thing, so, I don't see the difference between eight, three A and four.
Pick a number and stick with that?
They're both defined in the same, I think so.
One's a property and one's a structure.
Yeah.
Why can't you combine them?
Property line?
Combine this property and or structure. Yeah, I mean, it's a.
The other one says at least that it's an occupied structure.
Yeah, that's the difference, it says thirty-five feet from an occupied structure, but then twenty-five feet is.
It should be a property line, I think, so at the end it changed from utilized property. It should be.
Property, you should say property.
On property, they want thirty-five feet bad in the building, so you can be able to quote it, you want to. So, as would they be changing, uh, three A to, uh, say property line?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's what I think. And what do we do about that four, the outdoor furnace shall be set back no less than thirty-five feet from a residentially or commercially occupied structure?
Including the principal structure, or such outdoor furnace.
As an accessory.
And whose business is it when I burn in my wood, my wood stove?
What, now, what did you ask us to?
You can't burn leaves.
I got three A, I'm talking about.
I put in there all of them, four is, I mean, if they're gonna say this, if they're gonna say that you can't burn your trash in your outside wood stove, then you better not be burning in a trash barrel.
That's right.
And I know a person that's got six of them lined up right now, what, trash barrels? What are they overfilled and not can burn on?
Oh, no, they burn, the rats fly.
Rats?
Yeah, rats.
Okay, so then what do we, uh, wanna talk about changing four to unless? Yeah, why not twenty-five?
Make it the same as.
The top one, A, three five feet.
You know, I don't know for safety reasons, I don't know if outdoor wood burners have, uh, under the directions of installing it, do they have a minimum possibly thirty-five feet from any structure or not? Yeah, I know.
I don't, we, we'll see, we'll check, I don't know.
I just hate to put twenty-five, if, uh.
Your insurance company will tell you how.
Or the city insurance company will tell you. Yeah.
They came right out and measured ours, so they'll tell you where it can go.
Well, when they're putting that in there, they wanna regulate the height, that had to be so high.
It's smooth pipe, yeah.
Yeah, and I said, you can't do that unless you're gonna be physically responsible for that furnace going into hell, because that company gets that so many high heat out of chimney, you can't go above the regulations, the company sets, run that furnace, and they're gonna have like, there's something like thirty feet above the E line?
Ours isn't that tall.
No, I said, you can't. Can't do it, because the warranty on those verdicts, you can't hold a voice.
Draw, you could do that. Alright, anything next, section?
Yeah, the three oh seven.
Yep.
Uh, A and then six.
I put masonry or brick, or whatever you wanna call that. Acceptable fencing material?
Real what, three oh seven?
Yeah, put your functional acceptable, acceptable fencing material shall include wood, wood like plastic, or any second material, and chain line.
Well, they could have a brick fence if they want to.
Right, right, I think that was.
You should add bricks in there.
Uh, masonry screening wall shall be designed and constructed so as not to modify natural drainage or anything, okay, so it's like these properties. Okay?
Look, they talk about masonry up there, but then they come down here and tell you what other acceptable.
Acceptable, yeah, well, you can't use masonry, because you got a drainage problem. So.
Uh, not smart woman, that's why maybe know that little.
So we do want that.
Michael, whatever it's called, I don't know.
Article four, uh, four six, section four oh eight C. Somebody else is.
Where are we at? I'm at three oh seven, number seven. Heights for emergency vehicles and utility under width, that's actually.
What section are you on, man?
Three oh.
Same three oh seven.
Three oh seven, number seven.
Okay.
Okay, interfering with access to emergency services, and also utilities. But it seems like you would need to know when you're building a fence, or you know the width and height of those trucks, and it depends on the truck coming, like, dang. Yeah, it does need to be big enough so they can get through, that only makes sense, you don't want the fire truck to throw out there, your house is way over there. It's hard to get holes that far, that clip.
Yeah, more than we went to the road anyway, so, yeah, so you can get in, so.
The driveway needs to be with the roads?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, most driveways are anyway.
So the fence has to be.
Opening the fence, like a gate.
The opening of the fence needs to be the width of the road.
Cause most of the ground is about that wide anyway, to get your own vehicle bid, so.
Okay.
They're not gonna make it too small, they, they can't get their own vehicle bid.
The width of the, the one lane of the road.
Yeah, one lane, yeah. Okay, so, that one's okay?
Yes, yeah, I was concerned about that, the height.
Most of the games will be, most anyway. Uh, a three foot fence in the front? Yeah. And one, and it actually says that in the front, it's only supposed to be the three foot high fence.
Where are you at?
Uh, it'd be three oh seven A.
A one.
And on the side or the rear should exceed six feet. In a non-residential, no fence wall or other non-loading screening structure shall exceed twelve feet in height.
Well, somebody wants a six foot fence in the front of their house, why can't they have it?
I was gonna say, the, the neighbors down the road on the corner breaking the law, and theirs is well over six, all the way around.
Yeah, you know, six foot around the edge in the back, okay, but why can't you have it, if you want it, I don't why you would, but if you do, you should be able to do that.
I was told that's put in there so they can drive down the road and look into your yard for violations, and have no privacy.
Yeah, but you guys have the ability to change that if you want to, right?
Yeah.
You can change it to six feet all the way around.
That's why they said they put it in there, because they want you to drive down and look in your yard, which means you can have a privacy fence if on your own personal property.
But you know what, if you got all your trash fenced in with a six foot fence all the way around it?
I can't see that light, you can't see that light, nobody cares, that's, that's right.
That's why I was talking, they start right in the sheer to back, because they want to be able to see into your yard when they go by, which means you don't have any privacy to see in your own yard.
Think you should change it to six foot in the front?
I think so.
Yeah, okay, I think that sounds great.
Yeah, we gotta learn on this here, here. You're cutting a new, but you, you know, landowner's break, and start telling people, you have a fence like this, wanting to so high and dumb.
Right.
Yeah, it doesn't say I can't have a, fundraiser doesn't say how, that I can't have a.
Yeah, right.
Can't have a what?
Says no one here says, say, I can't have a mold, or it's around my property. Can't have a mold around your property.
Sleeping dogs. Yeah, I don't think you should say how like.
Yeah, it's your, yeah, private property, you mean they're taking all your rights right away from you?
Yep. It's time to take it back, let's do this.
That's right, yeah.
Say how do I yard?
I know, right? What's next?
Anything else on section three?
Think about it. Everybody created six foot fence all the way around their yard, and Mr. What's his name that keeps bothering you, wouldn't have any perm- permission to go on anybody's property?
Negative, all the cars.
You got that right.
Nothing else, I'm on three.
Section three twelve, what do I got here? Enforcement procedures here in where, shall be unlawful.
Well, section three twelve is maintenance of junk prohibited.
I think what I wanna know is, the enforcement procedures found here, and that must be the stuff we discussed earlier about fines and all that, yes?
Yes.
Okay, I think that's what this was about, I wasn't sure what it was talking about.
Well, maintenance of junk prohibited, they, uh, eliminated the blight for this township, so.
That means they added back in.
Unless we're letting back in.
Certain on property creates blight, it is subject to enforcement.
It's never been taken out of ordinance.
Yeah, I was saying, it's never been removed.
It's never been removed from the ordinance, that's why our process been a lot, that you won't, that you can't go do anything. You tell us you can't do anything, because they said you can, but our ordinance has never pulled it.
Yeah. Okay.
They took them away a while ago.
Yeah.
Bring the TV tray. We can get one out.
I was.
There's one right there, it's the wall.
There's one right over there too. Any more in section three? Yeah.
Out there is more in section.
You got more in section three? What's yours next?
Um, I don't think, uh.
I don't think they ever took it, I'm glad I know there.
Well, like, was this, a member of our.
Oh.
Center of seizure found here, and I think I found him later. Fifteen maybe?
The enforcement procedures.
Uh, article fifteen, fourteen.
Fifteen, fourteen?
Yes.
Well. Before we, can we, can we, does, do we have anything for section four?
This is what we're talking about.
Yeah, I just wanted to see if this was something we're talking about. Cause it talks more about that, where the junk cannot for abandoned motor vehicle.
You back in what?
It's back in fifteen, fourteen.
Second, article fifteen.
Yeah, so.
Number fifteen, fourteen.
And then it would be. They don't even have a hamburger or anything back there.
Are you talking about inoperable or abandoned motor vehicles?
Yeah, I think it might be just.
Or are you talking about junk? Under J.
And once they're just using that as like, you know.
Well, as I say, my junk and scrapyard, those three.
Now, I, I think you should leave that in there for now, because you guys, or, maybe it was just.
They were trying to take it off, and they did like, uh, mention it.
I think you guys were thinking about taking it to the board to see if they would, uh, reenact it or something, so I'd leave that in there till you find out what the board says.
So where is the section, is there such a section as blight, or what?
Okay, I, I don't know what they call it, but it's in the, I love their stuff like, uh, the.
Definitely, I, I think that was kind of basically what that was.
Yeah, like anti-noise, public nuisance, that's ordinance number sixteen, but it's half.
And you guys really know that, cause that wasn't on there, this is the website. What's that?
Article fifteen, or article, fifteen wasn't on the website?
I have article fifteen, fourteen, you're gonna be.
You have that one, you don't have ordinance number sixteen?
Yeah.
Which is the anti-noise in public nuisance, uh, nuisance ordinance.
Boy, we're gonna break the law, and my daughter's hoping, obviously.
Well, then.
I know, right?
What is the noise order?
Ordinance sixteen is anti-noise and public nuisance ordinance. An ordinance to secure the public health, safety and general welfare of residents and property owners of Maple Valley Township, Mount Com County, Michigan, by regulation of notice within the township to prescribe the penalties for the violation thereof. Uh, this ordinance shall be known and cited as the Township Anti-Noise Public Nuisance Ordinance. Uh, general reg- regulation, no person or corporation shall cause or create an unreasonable or unnecessary loud noise or disturbance injurious to help peace or quiet or the residents of the prop- residents and the property owners of the township. Unreasonable shall be defined as sound exceeding that which is clearly audible within two hundred and fifty feet of the source of the invol- by involuntary listeners.
Oh, I bet you do.
Yeah, my mother-in-law would go over there two hundred.
Ordinance sixteen.
We already have.
Does that cover parties, fireworks?
See, I don't even have that one.
This was taken, this was put in effect August twenty-third nineteen ninety-two. Oh, for God's sake.
What's the issue, so it became effective in November twenty-first, like that?
But these are, these are additions?
Junkyard, okay.
Don't worry, y'all, that's your wife. I can hear you anyways.
Too close, you're too close.
Under ordinance sixteen. I'll make sure everyone can hear what I'm saying. Specific violations, the following noises and disturbances are hereby declared to be violation in, of this ordinance, provided however that the specifications of the saying is not hereby to be constructed, or I'm sorry, construed to exclude other violations of this ordinance not specifically enumerated. A, the playing of any radio, phonograph, television or other electronic or mechanical sound producing device, including any musical instruments in such a manner or with such volume as to unreasonably upset or disturb the quiet comfort or repose of other persons. B, yelling, shouting, hooting, singing in public street.
Hooting?
Between, between the hours of eleven P M and seven A M or at time, or at any time or place so as to unreasonably upset or disturb the quiet, comfort or repose of any person in the vicinity. C, the emission or creation of any excessive noise which unreasonably interferes with the operation of any school, church, hospital or court. D, the keeping of any animal.